Morning, calling and convening the Committee on Transportation here in the Hawaii State House of Representatives in this Hawaii State Capitol in Conference Room 430 here this Thursday, February 6, 2025. Convening the 10:00 AM agenda starting today at 10:01 AM. I am Dari Skila, the House Chair on the Committee on Transportation. My Vice Chair, Rep. Tina Grandinetti. Our members will be joining us shortly, but in respect of everyone's time, I want to get underway. I want to read this at the beginning of our hearing. In order to allow as many people to testify as possible, there will be a two-minute time limit per testifier. I ask that in the case that you are running close to your two-minute time limit, we will ask you to summarize your comments. Morning hearings must adjourn prior to our floor session, so please note that testifiers may not have the opportunity to testify. But in the event that you are not able to, please know you can submit your written testimony. It will be considered by the committee. Also, if you are going to be testifying in person and did not provide written testimony, please make sure you're able to provide that to our committee clerk upon adjournment of today's committee hearing. For those on Zoom, please keep yourself muted and your video off while waiting to testify after your testimony is complete. The Zoom chat function only allows you to chat with our tech staff, and please use it only for technical issues. If you're disconnected unexpectedly, you may attempt to rejoin the meeting, and if disconnected while presenting testimony, you may be allowed to continue if our time permits. And please note the House is not responsible for bad internet connection. In the event of a network failure, be necessary to reschedule the hearing or a meeting for decision-making. In the case appropriate notice will be posted, and please avoid using trademarked or copyrighted images. Please refrain from any profanity or uncivil behavior. Such behavior may be grounds for removal from the hearing without the ability to rejoin. And with that all being said, we'll get underway with our 10:00 AM agenda here this morning. Starting with our first item on the agenda, HB 667 related to transportation. Requires the Department of Transportation or appropriate county department, when disposing of a deceased cat or dog from a public roadway, to scan the animal for a microchip, record certain information, and report that information to the appropriate county animal services or animal service contractors appropriate funds. Vice Chair for testimony, please.
Department of Transportation in support?
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Larry Dill, I was administrator for the Department of Transportation. We stand on our testimony as submitted.
Thank you.
Humane Society in support?
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Stephanie Kendrick from the Hawaiian Humane Society. You have a written testimony in support of this measure. I just want to underline the intense community demand for this information. You know, it's a pet owner's worst nightmare to have your beloved pet get out and be killed on one of our roadways. And the only thing worse than that happening is not knowing. So we're gratified to see DOT's support for this measure. We hope the counties will be supportive as well. And mahalo to the chair and introducer of this measure for his support and for championing this issue in support of the human-animal bond and how much we all care about the animals in our lives. So appreciate the committee's consideration, and I hope you'll support this bill.
Thank you.
Pacific Pet Alliance in support? And we have nine individuals in support. Is there anyone else in person or on Zoom who'd like to testify?
Please come to the microphone and just state your name for the record, please.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Patricia Karpuz. Sadly, my husband's not here today. So I would like to say a few names. Jonathan Conger, Michelle Astro, Kekona Haya. Those are other people are in the same case as me where their pets have ended up in a landfill. So, excuse me. So we come here today with hopes that this actually goes through. My pet was, she got out, she didn't have a collar. And she doesn't have a collar because of safety purposes. However, Jonathan's pet Perry had a collar, but he still ended up in the landfill. So if our main thing is, oh, if the pet has a collar, it has an owner, but yet he wasn't called. So I'm here today, since pets are mandated, cats and dogs only, to have microchips, then we should assume that all pets and dogs are microchips, are microchip, excuse me. So we should at least have them scanned before taking them to the landfill and have this continuous long heartbreak that could be stopped with everyone's help. So we're just hoping, me, the community, that this does go through. Thank you.
Thank you, Patricia.
Is there anyone else in person or on Zoom who'd like to testify?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Members, any questions? I do want to note that Patricia folks were involved in initiating an online campaign for the support around this measure. And I believe the petition is upwards of 300, or 3,000 signatures, I believe. Yeah, so thank you, folks, for that. Moving on to our next measure, HB 230 relating to traffic citations. Requires police officers to send a carbon copy of the citation to registered owner of a vehicle in a certain timeframe after the citation is issued. Vice Chair for testimony.
What, a police department in opposition? Mattson Navigation Company in support? And two individuals, Nelson He'e Kaha'au Nia'la, sorry about that, in support on Zoom? And one other individual in support. Is there anyone else in person or on Zoom who'd like to testify?
Seeing no one to ask questions, four members will enter our next measure, HB 177 relating to civil identification cards. Makes issuance or renewal of a civil identification card free of charge effective 6/30/2025. Vice Chair for testimony.
Attorney General offering comments?
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, and members of the committee. My name is Rachel Jordan, Deputy Attorney General. The department has already submitted written comment and is available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Department of Transportation in opposition?
Larry Dill, DOT, we stand on our testimony as submitted in opposition.
Thank you.
Tuli Tofai individual in support?
Good morning, Chair, Kila, Vice Chair, Grandinetti, and members of the committee. Tuli Tofai testifying as a private citizen. Identification cards is like a basic necessity in our life that we live, and it's something that you need to enter to testify here. It's something that you need to go to the bank to pick up your child. And for a lot of people who don't have the means, it's a barrier that can prevent them from receiving resources from a lot of things. And it's something that, you know, our government should be working for the people. And I believe this is one thing that could help for a lot of our members who need to seek services. And it's a great way to extend a hand to those who believe that government is not working for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Tuli.
And then two individuals in support. And is there anyone else in person or online who would like to testify?
Okay, seeing no further testifiers, members, questions? I do want to note, I appreciate the Attorney General's comment on the measure, and I believe that we will find a middle ground in the HD1. Okay, moving forward on our next measure, HB 668 relating to motor vehicle insurance. Makes mandatory suspension of the driver's license of a driver of a registered owner of a vehicle for operating a motor vehicle without motor vehicle insurance policy. Vice Chair for testimony.
Office of the Public Defender in opposition?
Good morning, Chair and Vice Chair and members of the committee. My name is Haley Chang. I'm the first deputy at the Office of the Public Defender. We have submitted written testimony in opposition to this measure, and we do want to just make a couple of distinctions. We understand the challenges and the severity of drivers on the road without insurance. Our main issue is that the current law already mandates a license suspension if you do not get up to speed or maintain a current or obtain a current insurance policy. So we fear that the effects of this law will disincentivize our clients to obtain current insurance. It is very common for us to represent clients who come to court for a citation for no insurance. The judge will continue the case to authorize them the opportunity to get insurance, and they do so. Then everything is good. They are insured for a minimum of six months, and hopefully this will not happen again. Requiring a license suspension will, like we said, disincentivize those individuals to do that. Additionally, I'm sure the committee is aware of the mass volume of traffic cases at district court. We represent thousands upon thousands of individuals for no insurance offenses, driving while licensed suspension offenses. And this will only prompt and necessitate clients going to trial if they're facing a mandatory six-month insurance, excuse me, license suspension, and will do nothing but further the cycle that people are in who cannot obtain their driver's license or no insurance due to the revolving door of debt, community service hours, and things like that. So the movement now is to help people get their license back and to create an opportunity for people to not continue to pick up these citations. Once one of our clients who are all indigent get a traffic offense such as this, it can sometimes take years for them to get out of debt and sometimes never at all. And the whole time they're incurring citations, it doesn't actually stop people from driving, unfortunately. So we would just ask the committee to think about the big picture consequences of some of these measures. We agree with not promoting drivers without insurance, but there are ramifications that will have a deep impact on the citizens and the court system as a whole. So I will remain available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in person or online who would like to testify?
Members, any questions? I have a question for the Office of the Public Defender, please. So I know you noted in your testimony about having the flexibility for folks to obtain the six-month insurance policy. But what stopping them from getting insurance policy and canceling it the day after, which has happened?
Technically, there's nothing, but essentially, I can say this just as a narrative. I think that would be, I have been doing this work now for almost 18 years. I have personally represented thousands upon thousands of clients in traffic court. The clients who are in a position and able to get the insurance, I very rarely have seen that happen. We are very familiar with what we call our frequent flyer clients, who we will see over and over and over again, and that's due to a variety of issues. It's not a cookie cutter, one-size-fits-all approach. But I think the bigger consideration, and you're right, that is always a possibility. However, in my experience, and I think I can confidently state from my office's experience, the majority of people who go take the time to show up at court, appear in front of the judge, go get their insurance and return to show proof of that, have the means to maintain that insurance and want to get up to speed with all of their driving requirements. We just see the bigger impact. The clients that are not able to get insurance are just not able to get it. But what I do know is if you study the stats on the driving without license offenses, which I know was a big issue in last year's session, suspending people's licenses does not stop them from driving. I think unfortunately we know that. Not giving them the opportunity to get a license or to clear their stoppers does not stop them from driving. So truly, the practical impact of further penalizing it and making it more challenging for people to get their license or creating opportunities for them to get more traffic offenses is really only going to clog up the system even more. The people who have the financial means to stay current, it's not a struggle to maintain their insurance policy. These are not the individuals that will be affected by this bill. Those are the people that don't get these types of offenses, or they can clear them up very quickly. It's the indigent people in the community who have financial troubles, who rely on their transportation. Not that we're justifying them driving when they don't have a valid license or insurance, but that's truly who this is going to target. And I do not think that our current district court system can bear the brunt of adding additional penalties for traffic offenses. It's already overwhelmed.
Right, but I think in the position of the committee and as the committee chair, I have the position that driving is not a right, it's a privilege, right? And I think inherently what you're continuing to see, especially in rural communities where I live, where you have the uptick of folks who are not carrying the policies, and when renewal comes every year, when there's policies being claimed in an area where it is more deterrent, I mean, more prevalent of people not carrying these insurance, the burden of cost then is falling onto people who are trying to stay complicit.
Absolutely, but I think if the goal, right, I think, I would imagine that the committee's goal is to get people insured. I think what is a reality, unfortunate as it is, is that whether it's criminalized or just a citation, people are going to keep driving. We see that all the time. If we, if people were incentivized or afraid of receiving a citation because they didn't have a valid license or didn't have insurance, our district courts would be bare. That is the majority of our traffic offenses, if we're being honest. We get the speedings and the DUIs, of course, that's a big bulk of it. But the vast majority of cases that we handle in traffic court are driving without license, driving on a suspended license, driving on a revoked license, no insurance. And what I think we need to pour, that's why we've been so supportive and trying to do things like Community Outreach Court to help people clear their license stoppers. Because people cannot get to insurance, cannot get a license once they reach a certain point. They have a $100 debt, then it builds to 500, then it builds to 1,000. And for our clients that we represent at the Public Defender's Office, they can't get themselves out of it. We have people who are going to keep driving, and again, the courts can put them in jail. We have made any felony offense as of last year. We have not seen We have people who are going to keep driving. And again, the courts can put them in jail. We have made any felony offense as of last year. We have not seen a decrease in the number of offenses, driving without license citations that are being issued. We don't have the hard stats on that, but just narratively, as somebody who is in charge of the Public Defender's Office in all of the circuits statewide, we have not seen a decrease. So I think if the goal is, and we understand the necessity of imposing a punishment, but what this bill will do will disincentivize people to get insurance. Because that is one thing that the court can hang over their head right now. Hey, come back in 30 days, show me that you have proof of insurance and I will not suspend your license. Doing this takes that incentive away. So I am very sympathetic and understand, trust me, if we could get all of our clients licensed and insured, our jobs would be a lot easier. And I think there is a path forward to try to do this. But our position is, is that we need to create a system where people can get out of the hole that they're in so they can be properly licensed and properly insured. And we do agree with you that it is not a right, it is a privilege, but we have to carve out ways for people to meaningfully do that.
And then last question, for folks who are not able to obtain some of the insurance, are they able to leverage our state insurance policy for motor carriers that we offer for people who can't get traditional insurance?
Can't get their own individual insurance?
Right.
Well, I think that's a case by case basis, to be honest. A lot of times what we see too is, and that might be a situation that we can look into more. One of the common things that we see, right, is we have one vehicle, there is one registered owner, but there might be six, seven, eight people who access that vehicle. So it's who is responsible for getting the insurance? Obviously, the registered owner. Oftentimes, they're not the one driving the vehicle. And just as a side note, that's another issue we have a little bit with the language because it can penalize the registered owner or the actual driver. So that's another, I think, challenge. Like if, as a lawyer looking at this bill, if my client was the registered owner, but they couldn't really prove the identity of the driver, it would be a way for us to challenge the legality and the ability to convict someone under this measure. That's a little bit of a side note, but I, to your question, I can find out more information about that in terms of the state's ability to insure these people, but I don't have a clear answer.
Yeah, if you're possible, if that's possible, if you get that to me and I can share with the committee. Because I think that's always been my position is that we are able to offer insurance to the folks who one can't afford it, but two, in the position they can't get it. So I want to know how we've leveraged it or if we aren't leveraging it to our full possibility. If possible, please. While you're up here, members, any other questions? Okay, seeing none, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, moving on to our next agenda item relating to transportation HB 102. Prohibits the issuance of a certificate of inspection for a moped or motor vehicle that has been altered, installed or otherwise modified in any way, which will notably increase the noise emitted by the motor vehicle or moped above that emitted by the motor vehicle or moped as equipped from the factory. Vice Chair for testimony.
Department of Transportation offering comments?
Larry Deal for DOT, we stand on our comments submitted with our testimony.
Thank you.
Citizens Against Noise in support? Motorcycle Industry Council in opposition? And we have six additional individuals in support and 10 in opposition. Is there anyone else in person or on Zoom who'd like to testify on HB 102?
Thank you Vice Chair. Seeing there's no one to ask questions of, members move on to our next item on the agenda. HB 169 relating to mopeds. Increase the minimum age for moped operators from 15 to 16 years of age. Increase the minimum age requirement for individuals prohibited from operating a moped unless they wear a safety helmet from 18 to 21 years old. Vice Chair for testimony.
Department of Transportation in support?
Larry Deal for DOT, we stand on our testimony and support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moped doctors in opposition? Mopeds Direct in opposition? And seven individuals in opposition? Is there anyone else in person or on Zoom who'd like to testify?
Okay, members, any questions? Okay, move on to the next measure on our agenda relating to moped insurance HB 220. Requires that moped operators carry an insurance policy by incorporating mopeds into the insurance laws governing motorcycles and motor scooters, including with respect to provisions concerning required license insured to the relationship with tort law, proof of insurance card, penalties, rate regulation and minimum coverage levels. Make conforming amendments. Vice Chair for testimony.
DCCA with comments?
Tomson with the DCC Insurance Division, comments, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you.
Department of Transportation in support?
Larry Deal with DOT, we stand on our testimony as submitted in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Moped doctors in opposition? And 10 individuals in opposition? Is there anyone else in person or on Zoom who'd like to testify?
Thank you. Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to our next measure HB 277 relating to vehicular pursuit. Establishes a vehicular pursuit policy for law enforcement agencies. Effective 7/1/2026. Vice Chair for testimony.
Office of Information Practices with comments? Hawaii Police Department in opposition? Policing Project at NYU School of Law in support on Zoom?
Aloha, Chair Kila and members of the committee. I'm Josh Parker, Deputy Director of Policy at the Policing Project at NYU School of Law. We support HB 277 because ample data shows far too often pursuits put the lives of officers and community members at risk. For example, a recent national study reported that more than 3,000 people, including officers, have died in vehicle pursuits the past five years, including more than 500 bystanders with over 50,000 people suffering injury. Just one in 15 people killed during pursuits or chase for violent crimes. Most are chased for nonviolent crimes and low level driving infractions, like having a broken taillight. Because of the immense danger of pursuits, states and departments across the country have enacted laws and policies only permitting them for violent crimes and in some cases reckless or impaired driving. A working group of police chiefs and lieutenants recommended just this in the 2023 DOJ Police Executive Research Forum Report on Pursuits. And just last month, the largest municipal police union in the country successfully urged NYPD to adopt such a restrictive pursuit policy. Some testimony that was submitted opposes any uniform state legislation on pursuits. But this bill still lets departments customize on tactics. It just sets a floor, which is essential because we've seen with no current floor, the only county with publicly available core pursuit policy provisions Honolulu permits pursuits for any crime or traffic infraction, exactly the sort of policy resulting in needless fatalities nationwide. Reducing the danger of pursuit policies like Honolulu's is urgent, which is why wholly deferring to the Law Enforcement Standards Board is inappropriate. The LES B was established in 2018 and has yet to even issue its implementing regulations. Nor does it have the tools this legislature has to enforce the law and require data collection. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maui Police Department in opposition? ACLU of Hawaii in support?
My name is Nathan Lee, I'm with the ACLU of Hawaii. We are in support of HB 277. It's a much needed policy on vehicular pursuit and provides basic protections against the miscarriage of justice by those entrusted with our public safety. We want to highlight some of the data and reporting that was actually just referenced by the Policing Project. In that Department of Justice report, they found that the high speed chase, and I'm quoting, is not nor should be a routine part of law enforcement work. And, you know, provides risk to both passengers pursuing officers and uninvolved bystanders. I also want to note again that most of the time these police pursuits begin with minor violations. I think one statistic found that 75% of these fatal pursuits begin with something as basic as a broken taillight or some other kind of minor violation. And so what we're seeing here is, we're not calling for total elimination of discretion by police officers. We're just asking for some basic baseline measures to set a floor on that. And so we believe that these reporting requirements will create a better sense of standardized pursuit policies for Hawaii and also eliminate unnecessary risk and potential abuse of police discretion. And so we urge you to pass this forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
Patty Cook, individual in support? Is there anyone else in person or online who'd like to testify?
Okay, thank you so much Vice Chair. Members, any questions? All right, seeing none, move on to the next measure at HB 54 relating to motor vehicles. Increases the penalty for a third or subsequent offense of excessive speeding to Class C felony authorizes the court as part of the person's speeding sentencing, for the third or subsequent offense to order that the vehicle used by the person and the commission of the offense be subject to forfeiture. Vice Chair for testimony.
Department of Transportation in support?
Larry Deal with DOT, we stand on our testimony as submitted in support. Thank you.
Thank you.
Office of the Public Defender in opposition?
Good morning again. We have submitted written testimony in opposition. And I do just want to highlight some concerns that we have just about the way the measure is worded. You know, we of course have our own reasons why we think this punishment would be excessively harsh, given the other types of crimes that are designated as Class C felonies. Class C felonies are assault in the second degree, terroristic threatening in the first degree, sexual assault in the third degree, negligent homicide in the second degree. These are all equivalent Class C level offenses. So I just want to highlight that when we're talking about making a traffic violation a Class C felony. Additionally, the wording of the bill we find to be extremely problematic in subsection, I guess, D, the part that imposes and designates as a Class C felony and says without the possibility of probation or suspension, what that will then require is an open five year term of incarceration. Under the law, Class C felonies, in accordance with other statutes, there are only two options for felony offenses. Those are probation or the open term of incarceration. Open term is more commonly known as prison. And that's when we're talking about Halava Correctional or Seguaro in Arizona. You cannot do a extended jail sentence or modify the open term. There is only one charge under the law that allows for a modified open term, and that is for felony level Class C drug possession. The court does have the authority to order a reduced open term. So what this bill calls for is for people who would be convicted to be sentenced to the open five year term of incarceration. I don't know if that was the intent of the bill. But also the other requirements delineating a revocation of the license, attendance in a course of instruction and driver retraining, all of those cannot be done if you're in prison for five years. Those are terms of probation that would be ordered as a consequence of being placed on community supervision. So there are inconsistencies in the bill in and of itself that I believe make any proposed sentence, if you were to follow the letter of the law, an illegal sentence. And not one that any judge would be able to order without a very valid challenge from a defense attorney. I additionally wanted to highlight the strain that this will put on our law enforcement as well as the court system. Once you take something from a misdemeanor, a petty misdemeanor to a felony, that is involving a whole different level of personnel, you now will have to, in all likelihood, arrest for an offense like this. It requires usually a detective. If the spirit was of the bill was to allow people to be placed on felony supervision probation, the probation department does not have the infrastructure to support the volume. Additionally, every single person who would get charged with a felony offense would likely go to a jury trial. Once you make something a Class C felony, you are entitled to a jury trial. And this was something that we raised last year with the DWAL bill. The burden on the system, regardless of what the intent was. And as a result, we have seen very few of those charged because I think the prosecuting attorneys and law enforcement are not able to keep up with the demands. We've seen a few cases charged by the Attorney General's Office. We have yet to have the Honolulu prosecutors charge a DWAL felony. And the neighbor islands are just generally rejecting that notion and amending all of the charges because the system is not set up to support creating a felony for a traffic offense such as this. So I would just like to highlight some of those concerns. We do understand the problematic nature of people who engage in excessive speeding and that's not what we're here to comment on necessarily. I also want the committee to know, just as a practical matter, these cases are not that difficult for us to challenge as a matter of legal, from a legal perspective. It's reliant on the officer's use of a laser or radar. It's also reliant possibly on the pacing. Officers often stop people because they pace vehicles. Foundationally, evidentially, there are so many ways to challenge that. So these cases are already really heavily litigated about the accuracy of the laser, the radar, the pacing of the vehicles. And if you charge someone with a felony offense, they absolutely will be going to trial. And again, they will be jury trials. So the weight and brunt of this would have, I think, unintended consequences on the system, which is already having a difficult time processing and handling all of the very serious cases that we need to be addressing at the felony level. So I will remain available for questions. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Department of the Prosecuting Attorney, City and County of Honolulu. Honolulu Police Department? Oahu Metropolitan Planning Org, oh, I'm sorry, in support. Both of those. And then Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization in support? Anyone else in person or online who'd like to testify?
Thank you. Members, any questions? All right, seeing none, move on to our next measure HB 229 relating to transportation. Establishes a statewide speed restriction for motor vehicles with three or more axles or motor vehicles weighing more than 10,000 pounds. Vice Chair.
Looks like we don't have any testimonies submitted. Is there anyone in person or online who'd like to testify?
Okay, seeing no one, we can ask questions to members. We'll move on to our next measure HB 706 relating to highway safety. Requires all skateboard users under the age of 16 to wear a helmet while operating a skateboard. Vice Chair for testimony.
Department of Transportation in support?
Larry Deal with DOT, we stand on our testimony as submitted in support. Thank you.
Kiki Injury Prevention Coalition in support? Kapilani Medical Center for Women and Children in support? Paula Kurashige, individual in support? Suzanne Anderson, individual in support? Is there anyone else in person or online who'd like to testify?
Okay, thank you. Members, any questions? Okay, moving on to our last measure HB 670 relating to transportation. Renamed electric bicycle, excuse me. Renamed electric bicycle and electric moped rebate program to the Electric Mobility Device Rebate Program. Expands eligibility and amounts to maximum rebate amount. Vice Chair for testimony.
Department of Transportation in support?
Larry Deal with DOT, we stand on our testimony in support with recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Oahu Metropolitan Planning Organization in support? Hawaii Appleseed Center for Law and Economic Justice in support?
Hello, I'm Trandy Gilliam with Hawaii Appleseed. We're testifying in support of HB 670 and have also suggested some amendments. We support the bill because electric mobility devices can significantly reduce transportation costs with electric bikes offering lower operation expenses compared to personal vehicles. For example, in Hawaii, owning a personal vehicle costs about 8,100 per year. And with Hawaii owning an average of two vehicles per household, the price doubles to 16,200 per year. E-bikes also reduce car dependency, lower emissions and support Hawaii's climate goals. We have also provided a few suggested amendments, including adding a point of sale component and increasing the rebate. We believe changes would help more residents access electric mobility options and support state's climate goals. Thank you for opportunity to testify on this measure.
Thank you.
Hawaii Bicycling League in support?
Good morning Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. The Hawaii Bicycling League stands in, on our written testimony in support of this measure. We did make a comment to, for a language change, if you'd consider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ulupono Initiative in support?
Thank you Chair, Vice Chair and members of the committee. Mariah Yoshizu, on behalf of Ulupono Initiative. We stand on our testimony in support and offer a few amendments for consideration. Electric bicycles represent a transformative transportation solution that can significantly improve quality of life for our residents, particularly families, students, workers and low income individuals. The initial cost is far, is far lower than a car and eliminates ongoing expenses like fuel, insurance, maintenance and parking fees. insurance, maintenance, and parking fees. For workers who may live farther from their job opportunities due to housing costs, e-bikes can extend the practical commuting range while reducing physical fatigue. The e-bike subsidy program proposed in this bill can make this sustainable transportation option even more attainable for those who could benefit from it the most. We offer a few amendments for consideration, including adding a definition for higher-speed e-motives or other out-of-class vehicles that go more than 28 miles per hour. We believe many of those vehicles are the ones that are causing a lot of the safety issues, and then adding this definition can address this issue comprehensively and provide the most impactful tool for enforcement. In addition to amending the HRS Section 196-2, we also recommend amending HRS Section 291(c-1) to ensure consistent definitions across the statutes, as well as implementing a point-of-sale rebate system, which will help to lower the burden if families cannot do that upfront cost when they're buying the e-bike for themselves. Thank you so much for hearing this measure.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in person or on Zoom who'd like to testify?
Thank you. Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to recess. Reconvening the 10:00 AM agenda here on the House Committee on Transportation in the Hawaii State Capitol today in Conference Room 430, reconvening for decision-making on today's agenda. I always appreciate folks in there coming out to the committee, whether online or in person, just to have the conversation, because I think as we all put our policies forward as legislators, the best part of what we do with our job is allowing discussion with some of the folks. So people who are able to answer questions today, I do sincerely appreciate your folks' time and coming online and in person. All right, members, on our first measure, HB 667 relating to transportation, we're going to adopt the HD1. So what we'll do, we'll do some technical amendments needed for clarity, consistency, and style, with effect the effective date to July 1, 3000. I want to note in the purpose section that we're going to adopt language in the preamble, that the legislature finds that the tragic incident involving a dog named Mila, as reported by KATV News on November 8, 2024, highlights a critical gap in existing policies and procedures due to the absence of proper scanning equipment within the Department of Transportation, the lack of clear rules for owner notification, Mila is disposed of without her owner being informed. This measure seeks to address such deficiencies by establishing clear directives for notification and the use of scanning equipment to prevent similar occurrences in the future. Furthermore, the legislature recognizes that this measure aligns with the intent expressed in the previous legislative session through House Concurrent Resolution 171 and House Resolution 150, as noted in testimony provided by the Hawaii Maine Society. By enacting this legislation, the legislature forms this commitment to animal welfare and responsible procedures for handing lost or deceased pets. Members, I must strike section four in its entirety, as I am happy to report, the appropriation language is no longer necessary due to Department of Transportation's prior acquisitions of the required scanners. I'll note that in the committee report. And when I amend section two, to explicitly require county agencies not under the jurisdiction of the State Department of Transportation to collaborate with DOT and utilizing DOT-acquired scanners for the purpose of determining animal ownership, as the way the original bill was written, that we would have given the money to the counties, but if the state DOT is the holder of these devices, the county can actually coordinate with the state DOT on making sure, in concept, if the measure is adopted, to make sure that determining ownership. And then lastly, in honor of Mila's life and to prevent other pets from experiencing the same fate upon enactment by the Hawaii State Legislature, this act shall be known as the Mila Microchip Identification Act. Members, any questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, vice chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 667, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and vice chair vote aye. Representative Cochran?
Aye.
Representative Eveslin?
Aye.
Representative Kitagawa?
Aye.
Representative Lachica?
Aye.
Representative Miyake?
Aye.
Representative Muraoka?
Aye.
Representative Perick, excused. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Next measure, HB 230 relating to traffic citations, we're adopting HD1 with effect the effective date July 1, 3000, and I'm going to add language specifying in the clarity of the bill that a five-business-day timeframe for a postmark return receipt be added. I think this is a measure worth adopting, noting that if we, as drivers, may not be are the owner of a vehicle, that if someone is getting a ticket and they're not letting us know, it actually would give us due process. So in the spirit of due process and allowing the judicial system to work efficiently and equitably, this is my intent for the measure. Members, questions, comments, concerns? Seeing none, vice chair.
Voting on HB 230, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair and vice chair vote aye, noting the excused absence of Representative Perick. Are there any representatives voting no? Any with reservations? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next measure, members, HB 177 relating to civil identification cards. We're going to adopt the HD1 with the technical amendments needed for clarity, consistency, and style, with effect the effective date to July 1, 3000. I want to note and adopt the Attorney General's testimony in committee report, noting that concerns around cost sharing to be explored by the next committee. I actually want to say that I support a measure like this, as if we are going to do fines or systems on some minimum requirements such as an ID or card, I don't think there should be a barrier to receiving it, even because it's the one thing that's accessible for all people, but not accessible for all folks of financial background. So in the sense of trying to do due process, I want to see if there's a way that we can make this actually not be a cost burden to the person seeking it. And I want to thank a member, Cochran, for mentioning that the counties are willing to do some of this work, but we need to fund some of those mandates. So I appreciate that comment that she had shared in recess. With that, members, questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, vice chair for the vote, please.
Voting on HB 177, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting the excused absence of Representative Perick for all further measures on the agenda unless otherwise noted. Are there any representatives voting no? With reservations? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Members, next measure, HB 668 relating to motor vehicle insurance. My intent was to adopt an HD1 on some of this regarding the bill and doing some amendments, but after further discussion, I do want to find a way that, without impacting folks, that we could potentially ask a report be made regarding the utilization or the underutilization of our state insurance policy for folks who have some of these barriers to insurance, because we do offer it. And I think maybe it's the public not knowing it, and even us as a legislature not knowing that as a vehicle that's available. So for this measure, HB 668, I want to defer decision-making to a further date, as noted. We will do decision-making solely on this agenda item HB 668 on November, on February 11, 2024, here in this conference room. Huh? Thank you. Rep. Lachica, okay, starting from the beginning. We will defer decision-making on HB 668 to February 11, 2025, in this conference room 430, at 10:00 AM, for the consideration of decision-making on this measure, allowing us time to further discussion and maybe find a compromise. So with that, members, comments, questions, concerns? Okay, moving on to our next measure, HB 102 relating to transportation. We're going to, on this measure, recess. Thank you, members. HB 102 relating to transportation, we're going to adopt the HD1, will do technical amendments for clarity, consistency, and style, with effect the effective date July 1, 3000, and I'm going to adopt the suggested amendments proposed by the Motorcycle Industry Council's testimony. I, in concept, some of these measures are a concern to me, but I know they have good intent, and I think throughout some areas that many times folks can point to some of the modifications having disruption. So with that, I do want to make those amendments. Members, questions, comments, or concerns? Vice chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 102, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments, noting, are there any representatives voting no? Any with reservations? Chair, your recommendation is--
Thank you, members. HB 169 relating to mopeds, we're going to adopt the HD1, defect the effective date July 1, 3000. I do want to note in recess that Member Muraoka raised a concern about increasing the minimum age for folks having to wear a safety helmet from 18 to 21. I believe that it's worth exploring, but at this time, I'm going to move the bill with that language in there, but I will note in the committee report for that to be considered, because I think there are parts of the bill that is worth keeping, such as the minimum age, but I understand that maybe having that mandate up to 21 may have some issues. So I do want to note that in concern for the next committee to explore. With that, members, questions, comments, concerns? All right, seeing none, vice chair for the vote, please.
Voting on HB 169, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there any representatives voting no? Any with reservations? Chair, oh, okay, Representative Muraoka with reservations. Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you so much, members. HB 220, we're going to adopt the HD1, will do tech amendments for clarity, consistency, and style, with effect the effective date July 1, 3000. I want to adopt the recommended amendments, as noted in the testimony provided by the Department of Commerce and Consumers and Fair Insurance Division. We'll delete the HRS 43110c-304, one, Section C. We'll amend HRS 43110c-305c, Section 3, to include the term moped, and we will amend HRS 43110c-408, Chapter 1, to include the term moped. That's my recommendation. Members, questions, comments, or concerns? Rep. Eveslin.
Thank you, Chair. I will be voting with reservations on this. I just want to note some of the concerns that were brought up in testimony, that this will significantly increase the cost of operating a moped. Most people who are operating a moped are operating one out of cost concerns, because they can't afford anything else. So I think by increasing the cost will decrease mobility for many who rely on mopeds, or push moped users into utilizing a vehicle when they can afford it, which will increase congestion on our streets, which I don't think is a good outcome either. And just noting from DOT's testimony that they said that 80% of moped operators are already covered under some form of insurance, or at least those who have been injured in the past. So I don't think the problem is that big. And then lastly, that the major difference between a moped operator and somebody driving a personal vehicle is that if you're driving an automobile, you will do significant damage to somebody else when you hit them, whereas a moped will do minimal-- is that if you're driving an automobile, you will do significant damage to somebody else when you hit them, whereas a moped will do minimal damage. So I think insurance is really important for a car and not so important, or not as important for a moped. So I'll be voting with reservations. Thanks.
Thank you, Rep. Ebslin. Members, any other comments, questions, concerns? Members, with the concerns raised by Rep. Ebslin, I will note in the addition in the committee report that some of these unintended impact financial implications onto someone could be further explored in the next committee at CPC. So with that, members, any other questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, vice chair for the vote, please.
Voting on HB 220, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there any representatives voting no? With reservations? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you so much. Members HB 277 relating to vehicular pursuit. We'll adopt the HD one, will do tech amendments for clarity, consistency, and style, and I'll defect the effective date to July 1st, 3000. I do want to note the concern in the testimony received by the county police departments and divisions. I do want, though, the opportunity for this bill to move forward to allow the introducer and the final committee to explore some of the concerns and impacts further in discussion. And so with that, I think it is worth having the discussion and like to move the measure as a vehicle for that conversation. So with that, members, comments, questions, concerns? Vice chair for the vote, please.
Voting on HB 277, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there any representatives voting no? With reservations? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you so much. Members HB 54 relating to motor vehicles. We'll adopt the HD one, will do tech amendments needed for clarity, consistent style, with the fact the effective date July 1st, 3000. I'm going to implement the Honolulu Prosecutor's Office recommended amendment to require fingerprinting upon conviction. I want to note in the committee report the data provided for Oahu, by Oahu Metropolitan Organizing Organization in support on this measure. And I will also note the concerns and requests for amendments, as noted by the Office of the Public Defender for consideration by the next committee. As always, I just want to disclose that when Oahu MPO provides testimony, I do chair the policy board, but I do not direct the policy board to submit testimony in opposition or support of measures. So with that, members, any comments, concerns, questions? All right, seeing none, vice chair for the vote.
Voting on HB 54, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Chair votes aye, vice chair voting with reservations. Are there any, any other members voting no or with reservations?
With reservations.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. HB 229. We're going to adopt the HD one. I do want to note that there was no testimony, but I'm going to explain the concept and reasoning for this bill. In 2028, we enacted Act 238, which prohibits certain oversized commercial vehicles from using the far-left lane on roadways with three or more lanes by traveling in the same direction. However, by 2024, no citations has been issued due to the vague language and unclear enforcement measure as this measure aims to strengthen, as this so with HB 229. This measure aims to strengthen the law and enhance road safety. I want to note, according to the USDAOT and NHSTAs, so United States Department of Transportation, National Highway Safety Traffic Administration, a large truck is any medium or heavy truck excluding buses and motorhomes with a G V W gross vehicle weight rating of over 10,000 pounds. This category includes both commercial and non-commercial vehicles. I want to note in 2021, 71% of large trucks involved in fatal crashes were heavy trucks. Data from the NHSTA shows a 2% increase in fatalities in the 3.7 rise in injuries at crashes involving large trucks between 2021 to 2022. In 2022, there were 168,816 large truck crashes, leading to 76,550 injuries and 5,936 fatalities. Even more concerning is the 50.5 increase in fatalities involving large trucks nationwide from 2012 to 2022. So with that, members, I'm going to defect the effective date July 1st, 3000. We'll do technical amendments needed for clarity, consistency, and style. I want to note and add that the provision shall not apply to a motor vehicle with three or more axles as defined under the Federal Highway Administration Vehicle Category Six or Higher when actively overtaking and passing another vehicle traveling in the same direction in compliance with applicable traffic regulations. This provision shall also not apply to a motor vehicle with three or more axles as defined under the Federal Highway Administration Vehicle Category Six or Higher when utilizing the left lane for the purpose of making a left turn exiting or preparing to do so. We're going to add that a person who violates this section shall be subject to a fine of not less than $150. And any subsequent violation of this section committed within a two-year period shall result in an additional fine of $350 per offense. This provision shall apply to counties with a population of 500,000 or more. Counties with a population of less than 500,000 may elect to adopt this policy through ordinance or other appropriated legislative action. So with that, members, that's my recommendation. Comments, questions, or concerns? Okay, vice chair for the vote, please.
Voting on HB 229, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there any representatives voting no? Any with reservations? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. HB 706 relating to highway safety. Members will adopt the HD one, will do tech amendments for clarity, consistency, and style, and I will defect the effective date to July 1st, 3000. Members, questions, comments, or concerns? All right, vice chair for the vote, please.
Voting on HB 706, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there any representatives voting no? With reservations? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Okay, members, last bill HB 670 relating to transportation. Members, we're going to adopt the HD one, will do tech amendments needed for clarity, consistency, and style. I will defect the effective date to July 1st, 3000. I'm going to remove all the appropriations amounts as stated in the bill while documenting the original figures in the committee report for reference and further discussion by the Finance Committee. I'm going to align the definition of bicycles, e-bikes, micro mobility devices, and other relevant terms with language in HB 958 HD one that this committee adopted to ensure accuracy and consistency. This includes but is not limited to the classifications and definitions of a Class One, Two, and Three, and high-speed electric device, HSED, or out-of-class definitions. To the concern noted by Hawaii Bicycling League regarding amending the traffic code, that if, with these adoptions, sorry, it wasn't traffic code. Hawaii Bicycling League has noted in a testimony about amending the traffic code with the adoption and consistency of HB 958 HD one that will answer that as well. And also noted the Hawaii Bicycling League's recommended amendment in the bill, page nine, line 16. That is where it exists. And I went to insert language that any modification or alteration to an e-bike or micro mobility device after purchase from the manufacturer that affects its classification performance or compliance with the specification set forth in this act shall result in the disqualification of the rebate. If such modification is made, the recipient shall be required to repay the full rebate amount to the issuing authority. The department or designated agency shall establish a process for verification and enforcement, including but not limited to inspections, reporting requirements, and penalties for noncompliance. I will include the testimony from OMPO and Hawaii Apple in the committee report for potential recommendation, modifications, and further consideration. And I apologize, members, for the late testimony. I do want to adopt the recommended amendments, as noted in HDOT's testimony to omit section three. Omit the specific language in section three regarding Department of Transportation may establish a retailer application and portal to provide the rebates. The third-party administrator shall not expand more than 10% of the amounts for the rebate program. Revising section three about the third-party administrator may pay rebates. And I also want to note for consideration the appropriations stated by DOT in their testimony as well of 500,000 for general funds in 2024-25 and in 2025-26, the amount of $700,000. And in 2026-27, the amount of $700,000 to be deposited into the Highway Development Special Fund Electric Mobility Subaccount. But also noting that these, this language and numbers will be blank. And then also to appropriate the Highway Development Special Fund Electric Mobility Subaccount Special Funds, as noted in their testimony as well, that the funds appropriated shall not last at the end of the fiscal year for which it is appropriated. But any unencumbered funds remaining shall lapse at the end of the following fiscal year. And we'll add language to clarify that DOT can expand appropriated funds, that the sum appropriated shall be expanded by the Department of Transportation for the purpose of this act. Okay, lastly, I want to acknowledge the good faith and intent of this measure, but I need to maintain full transparency about its dependence on funding availability. I want to note that the potential federal funding cuts and their impact on the state budget remain uncertain this session. And note as stated, and I will note this as stated in our committee report for consideration. Members, this was a bill that made it all the way to conference last year that we did not adopt. So this is the hope to try to bring the measure back, but I have to be transparent on the part that some of the funding is all subject to consideration and discussion. So with that, members, questions, comments, or concerns? Okay, vice chair for the vote, please.
Voting on HB 670, Chair's recommendation is to pass with amendments. Are there any representatives voting no? Any with reservations? Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
With that, members, our hearing is adjourned.